It's boring.
It's Matt.
Is there a motion to open tonight's regular meeting for Tuesday, October 13, 2025? Trustee Rothrock, second trustee Patino, all in favor? Meeting is hereby open. Can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, to the meeting. And we have a fairly light agenda today. You'll see that we're all present. Trustee Rosenberg is appearing virtually, and his address has been properly noticed. And I don't know if anyone is sitting in your living room with you, trustee Rosenberg, but...
Once again, no one has taken me up on the invitation.
Okay. So my first actions are to do some appointments. We know that deputy mayor Sullivan left, and she had been the liaison to a certain number of committees. And today, we're going to replace her with our newest trustee. So I'm going to appoint trustee Rothrock to the facilities committee as the vice chair.
Okay.
Okay. Luck with that.
Wait, is that the facilities committee that has not met in the four years that I've been on it?
At least four years.
Well, now.
She's the vice chair.
Here's the new chair.
Be careful what you wish for, Matt.
And trustee Rothrock is also going to be pointed as the liaison to Children's Village. So I do encourage you maybe to reach out to Children's Village and see... Because we haven't heard anything from them in quite a while. So it would be good if you could reach out to them and maybe come back with some kind of a report on what's happening and what their plans are for the future. So that would be good for you to follow up on, report back to us. And I think I did this at the last meeting, but I'll do it again. I'm going to appoint to the Parks and Recreation Commission trustee Patino. So congratulations, trustee Patino.
Thank you. I already attended my first meeting.
Courtesy of the floor. Is anybody here for courtesy of the floor? Come on up.
Good afternoon, Patty Steinsteiner. One of the members of the Ferry Festa Committee. And I'm hoping that my three minutes hasn't started yet because they've got a whole bunch of people to thank. They say it like takes a village, and it does. It's really, really good. This year's festa, I thought, was one of the best. And I think that's because a whole bunch of people got involved and did a really good job with it. I want to shout out to the vendors and the local businesses because they all seem to be in the right spirit. We have fewer complaints about the Ferry Festa than we did in previous years. The village staff was wonderful, picking up all kinds of slack on all kinds of challenging things. Liz doing her bit, giving me thousands and thousands of parking passes. I wish we had that many vendors. Jeff for all the keeping track of all the stuff. Rob Yumira and Margaret, I think you spent a lot of time trying to keep us legal in the world of alcohol, which is really good.
Legal? She kept you legal?
And the DPW does a remarkable, remarkable job. A special shout out to Steve Treza, Jen Dorman doing a lot of work before it with a kind of aggressive, interesting de-waste committee that actually pulled it off. But they made it happen. They made it work. And I'm giving a special shout out to Danny Gardner on that because I got... Everybody from the Sustainable Dobbs Committee said how wonderful he was being with all the bins and all that stuff, which is really great. I want to give a special shout out to Chief Rick, who was not able to be here this year, but who you can see the testimony of his way of running an apartment, that his department stepped up. And they were as... They were... If anything, they were better than it. Everybody knew they had to really do their bit. Lieutenant Colvin, you know, he was easy to work with, did all the stuff that we needed. He would not give me a gun, wouldn't give me a microphone, wouldn't do any things that I want, which I think that's probably better. Shout out to Kendra and the rec department for helping organize all the different things and wrestle with the inflatables and that we actually got two, which was two. It would have been nice to have more, but that's my opinion. And I guess before I, you know, thank the really important people, I wanted to give a shout out to Richard Tannenbaum, who stepped up big time and who really, really did a wonderful job with it. He did all the things that we needed, particularly the things that I'm really bad at, like trying to get money and stuff. He took that seriously. And then it gets to the board of trustees, who we would not be allowed to do this if you guys didn't say we're allowed to do this. So it's really cool. And Sheri and Christie for showing up in the parking lot, which was good, and it went really well. I think that was smooth. And then a very special thank you to our mayor for delivering potentially the best weather we've ever had at a fest.
Ironic, after all these years and tears.
You had to cut... Well, this is your... You don't get to be mayor for next year, so it's like, this was it, man. You put all the effort in, and you got us the best weather. Thank you so much.
First, I want to thank you, Patty. You deserve all of our... Year after year, you put in a real yeoman's effort into this, and you're really, truly one of the unsung heroes about this. So thank you very much for all that you do. Yeah, I didn't even see you, I don't think, that day, but you were... You were sure running around doing your thing, so thank you very much for what you've done. Elected officials, not politicians. Thank you for everything that you've done and for everything that you do do for the village that very few people may know about. So thank you. And again, you listed a million people who ought to be thanked. And I'm sure Christie has even more names. Yeah, Jess has more names as well. So we want to thank everyone for what they've done. It was a pleasure. It was great. Police Department was fantastic about it. Steve and the DPW were great also. And did you hear me, Steve? Steve was great, as was Kendra and her department. So we take the village, and it was great. It's probably the shining highlight of the village's season. So I want to thank everyone for what they've done. I really did nothing but show up, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
And that's great. So thank you very much. Anybody else for courtesy of the floor? Okay, so we can move to some action items.
Are you going to move the old business item from the workshop that you didn't get to?
Well, we're going to talk about that now, right? Isn't that what's coming up, is the Expedition SS?
I think that's a great idea. Just wondering.
So maybe Lieutenant Colvin, you can come up and tell us how you arrived at this decision, what research you've done, and we can decide.
So during the budget cycle, beginning of the year, the chief had asked me to get quotes for new police vehicles. I got two quotes for the Ford Interceptors, which are the cars that are in the back lot, except for the Tahoe. This is the Ford Expedition Interceptor. I didn't realize that one of the cars that we were actually going to be replacing is an interceptor... Oh, I'm sorry, is a four-by-four Chevy Tahoe. So when that was revealed by myself, I started looking for the best replacement for that Tahoe. I came up with the Ford Expedition SSV. Fortunately, that does not come in a hybrid. The largest hybrid vehicle for police use is the Ford Interceptor, which is what we currently are transitioning to overall for the fleet. That car is an all-wheel-drive car for an interceptor. It performs very well day-to-day, but it's for those situations where weather... Weather needs present an unusual, difficult time for the cars with a lower ride height, weight, traction on an all-wheel drive is a little different than four by... I'm sorry, four-by-four capabilities. The SSV is an option that I've talked to the village mechanic about. Since all of our vehicles are Ford, he has a relationship with Ford. So just to streamline maintenance of these vehicles is another reason why we're looking for the Ford. Better gas mileage than the Tahoe PPV, which is the other police package vehicle from Chevrolet. Dodge, their Durango is an all-wheel-drive car, which is not what we're looking for. There are a number of private roads in the village, 20 to 25, as I spoke with DPW foreman Treza about, that we don't control how they're plowed and maintained during periods of snowfall. We need to get to where we need to get to when recalled. So that's another reason why we're looking to have this four-by-four vehicle. It just has better capabilities in extreme weather. I like to say I'd rather have it and not need it than need it and not have it. And when somebody calls, we got to get there. Although this is a gas vehicle, we're not looking long-term to continue always buying gas vehicles. If there was a hybrid option for a vehicle of this nature, we would definitely explore it. But unfortunately, at this time, they don't make it. After looking into it a little further, it looks like the Tahoe was made a hybrid up until about 2013, and then they stopped making it. So it's not an option for us right now. So really, we're just looking to purchase this vehicle to replace a current four-by-four gas vehicle. With the approval of the car from the last meeting, we'll now be up to five hybrid vehicles in the fleet. And then going forward, we would always continue to look for replacement vehicles that are going to meet the needs of the village with the long-term goals of, you know, sustainability and transitioning to the hybrid realm.
Okay, so not to put words in your mouth, but what are you saying? That the car, the vehicle that you're looking... That you want right now, all the capability and all the modifications just does not come as an EV or a hybrid? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board?
Thank you for taking the time to go back and pull that because that's all we really wanted to check.
Thanks for having me back.
I also just want to say the memo that you shared, like kind of laying out what those differences were and why that was needed, that was extremely helpful. So I want to second that that kind of rationale is... We don't need to... You answered all of our questions in the document, so thank you.
Okay, so having said that, is there a motion to allow the police department to purchase a police vehicle and upfitting of... Off of the New York State contract that's outlined in the resolution, a 2026 Ford Expedition SSV four-by-four, which is ready to be purchased at a cost of $56,799.50, whereas the cost of the upfitting for patrol use would be an additional $19,532.59? Is there a motion? Trustee Galen, second trustee Nell, all in favor? That passes unanimously, so you got it this time.
Thank you.
Action item number two. We had a meeting during the workshop to discuss and review the proposed village's comprehensive financial goals and policy document. I know that Jess has been working on this for many years, and I appreciate that we're going to finally get it done. We've had questions, we had comments, we had some changes. So in light of all that, I think we're ready to move forward with this. So is there a resolution of the Dobbs Ferry Board of Trustees to adopt the village's comprehensive financial goals and policy document as paid part of the record? Trustee Rothrock, second trustee Rosen Asher, all in favor? That passes unanimously. What am I doing? Isn't... Did we do three? I thought we did three last meeting.
That's what we just did.
This is for the building department?
Oh, the building department. It's for... I'm sorry, I read it. Okay, you're welcome. So we have a memo from the building department, from Dan Romer, who explains what he wants... He thinks should be done. There's presently an older car, and getting a Ford makes sense because now it looks like the whole village is going to be having Ford. So any other questions or comments before we move forward with this?
I just want to know, do we know how much money we spend on cars every year? I mean, I'm not being facetious. I feel like at least, you know, once a month, we get a request for to buy a car.
So we do have a...
Is that just like it's an every-other-year thing or an...
We have a process where we try to rotate the vehicles out every five years. So we try to spread them out over...
I've only been on the board for four, and I've had at least 20 votes on cars.
How many cars do we have in the village?
I don't know.
A guesstimate, what do you think?
I know that they have, what, 10 or 15? DPW has a number. Building Department has three.
Probably like 30?
Fire vehicles. Yeah.
Twenty-five, 30, that makes sense. You said you grew 20, it's probably 30.
Dump trucks, garbage trucks, police, trailers.
Pickup, just pick up, just fire.
Right, I'm just saying, it just seems like we're always like voting, of course.
Jeff, in the financial policy documents, it seemed like there was an opportunity to kind of like have a little more, like maybe as part of that... I know that's kind of the policy document, and there's like the implementation component with everything, but maybe there's a way to like have, like for visibility for us, for the public, to say like, here's the entire fleet.
Right.
Here's what the anticipated, you know, shelf life of this.
We try to do that during the budget workshop.
Right, yeah.
Always have the time to...
Right. But if we just had one spreadsheet that had all of them, and we knew what year we bought them, and we know that it's every five years or whatever, then we would know that this is the budget we can... And then we can look at every year how many vehicles are turning over.
Okay, so is there a motion to...
Is it... Did you look at other smaller vehicle options? Like either, you know, for... Both for cost and for efficiency? Or do you carry equipment and other things, and you need a larger vehicle? Like, you know, can you get away with a smart car? Or do you really need a medium-sized SUV?
This was... We did look at other options. This is the... One of the ones that comes as a hybrid. It's all-wheel drive. It's good for us in all-weather and everything. And as Travis said, the mechanic is trying to get us to keep the same vehicle so he could stock the same parts and everything for all the cars instead of having a bunch of different models.
Okay, so we could have some minor... Some savings on the cost of the purchase and some increased costs on the cost of maintenance and... All right, everyone feels...
Did you find the... Yeah, but did you find that the Ford Escape was too small for you?
It was, and this one's actually based in the fire inspector's car, who has the most stuff of all of us. And he just fits his stuff in the hybrid, in Explorer.
Those Ford Escape have been recently, over the last couple of years, having a lot of maintenance issues, and they probably really should be rotated out.
Is there a reason that this... I feel like... Sorry, Dan. Is there a reason that this car can't be fully electric? Like, why do we need a hybrid?
We looked at this about a year ago, and the only car that worked for us all-electric was the Tesla. That was an all-wheel drive that we could use in all-weather. And the board didn't want us driving a Tesla.
No, I think there's a lot more EVs on the market now than...
Bidding the Tesla, from my recollection, there was no... There is no way to bid out a Tesla the way that...
I don't think we want a Tesla.
On the state contract.
No, we don't. No, my question is... Yeah, yeah, yeah. My question is, are there SUVs? EV SUVs on the state contract, is my question.
Like, it would be like the Ford Lightning pickup truck?
That would be the other one.
Or I don't know if the Rivian, that's an American-made?
Well, the Ford Mach-E, maybe. Is that maybe...
We looked at those, and the costs were a lot more than Explorer.
Yeah, the Rivian is very expensive.
The main reason is to try to keep all the same model for the mechanic is one of the reasons.
EV is less maintenance, so... But if we need an SUV, maybe on the county contract.
Do you feel we need an SUV as opposed to a regular car, sedan somehow?
Yes. They don't... They don't make... The other one that's all-wheel drive is, like you said, the Lightning. They don't make any other SUV that's all-wheel drive. They make like the Rivian and stuff, but that's all... It's like a...
Too nice.
Much more expensive car.
What about hopping onto a county contract?
Yeah, I don't know. What... Did you look at... What contracts did you look at? I don't even know what the mechanics of that is.
Because the county has pre-assess.
Rob, but he wants... He says they say they need SUVs.
But if Toyota is on the county contract, then maybe there's a Toyota.
It would have to be the exact make and model, and it would have to have the piggyback language. Yeah.
I guess this is maybe something, not necessarily for this particular purchase, but what we've been doing up until now is always piggybacking on the state contract. And the state contract, if I'm not mistaken, is American cars only. Was it not?
I think it's preference to American cars, but I don't know if it's totally...
But it's like almost exclusively, like when you see them. But Sheri's just saying that the county has its own... Has, you know, has another... So maybe there's just a way to look at both options. For, you know, when you're talking to departments about what next year's car purchases, maybe you can give them that information, and they can see what's possible. And that'll just... We'll have more options, right? If their options are limited from the search point of view, then there's two cars, right? Like Travis found one car.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, like there's... I mean, you know, there's the Toyota Land Cruiser Hybrid, right? But it's not on the... Like, how do we find out if that is on the county contract versus the state? And if it's competitive, cost-wise?
It would be reaching out to the county to see if it's on the contract. The department do that, should do that?
Yeah, Rob, maybe we should be more centralized in how we buy cars also. Like, the department head seemed to be doing this like in a vacuum. Maybe there's a way that we could do this.
I don't know if there's a directory of all of the available solicitation across the state in terms of piggyback. You know, they... You found recently that the New Rochelle contract for the light... The electric, yeah. So it's... I don't... I don't know how you would research to find out all the possible...
Couldn't I come help?
All the potential piggyback contracts across the state.
I mean, what I did was to circumvent that, was to actually call the contractor and ask him, are you on state contract? He was last year, but not this year. That's why the piggyback language helped us get over the hump.
Well, I think maybe what the mayor was referencing is like, the building department needs a car. The building department's requirements are... Needs to be at least all-wheel drive, if not four-wheel drive. It needs to be an SUV because it's for the fire inspector, and that... And he needs to carry a lot of stuff. And then it's like, you know, I don't know if it's in Rob's office or somewhere, but like, you know, it... I think that makes a lot of sense, that every single department head doesn't necessarily need to be like kind of spending their time when their expertise is better, you know, reviewing building permits. I'm not sure that you need to take yourself all of that.
Like a year or two years ago. And the cars were either too small, or they weren't all-wheel drive. It was like 15 different ones that we looked at.
But if someone... I don't know who it should be, but if someone had... Was the point person on the cars, then I know that the board is always going to ask the same questions, which are...
I was going to say that...
An EV option? If there's not an EV option, what are the hybrid options? And then these are the three contracts that we always check, you know, whether it's, you know, state, county, and choose New Rochelle or White Plains or one of the big cities. Then like, then all of that can be handed to us, and we won't have to ask.
The departments bring their budgetary requests to you. And at that point, typically, they've gone through X and, I guess, analyzed what they think they need. This was approved in the budget as an Explorer.
Right.
A hybrid Explorer. So I don't necessarily know what Dan needs for... Or Rod might not necessarily know what Dan needs for his department.
But if Dan says, this is what I need. I need it to be at least all-wheel drive, and I need it to be...
He did.
Yeah, but now we're asking follow-up questions, and, you know, for obvious reasons, Dan has a lot of, you know, building department business on his plate. Like, we're asking like, well, what about, did you check this contract? Did you check that contract? That's not Dan's, like...
No, that actually is the department head's responsibility to follow the procurement policy. It absolutely is.
And so I think there's different... I think there's a difference between having a kind of like an inventory of all the cars that we have, when we're going to be needing them, and then being more proactive about looking into what are the options that will exist. We know that they're going to come to us. You know that you're going to come to us in December and ask for a car. So maybe back, you know, a few months before that, you see that, and you could see that there are, if you have information. So it could still be at the department heads. But I guess what I'm saying is, is that it just seems like we randomly get these requests. I know they're not random to you guys, but they just like come up, and then we start asking all these questions, which maybe could have been answered if we just kind of had something more laid out as a policy of how you get cars.
I kind of feel like you guys ask these questions at budget time also. So we're kind of re-ligating the purchase, you know what I mean?
I think if we... If it's presented in our backup as you've already approved the purchase of this car at budget season.
Right.
And this car follows your requirements of being an EV if possible, and so then it's not possible, so it's a hybrid, and if not possible, it is gas. Like, you know, if we...
Help us say yes more quickly.
Yes. We will say yes faster if we have backup that presents it that way.
In the backup memo, you could say, I checked the New York State listing and the county listing and whatever. Because it also seems like the village mechanic is now telling us unofficially that every car we buy should be a Ford.
I know, and I don't think so.
Right.
I also think we made a commitment as a board to want to move towards electric vehicles. But yeah, it seems like the last few times, every time it's come up, there's been some reason why that can't happen. And so, you know, we have to know that... This, as you guys need to know, like as a board, we all want to move towards using more electric vehicles, but it just seems like there's a lot of reasons why we can't do that every single time. And I know that there are places where they are using electric vehicles. So we just need to be a little more, you know, conscious of that fact. So if you come before us and you're going to ask us to get something that's a gas guzzle or whatever, we are going to have questions about it. So you, at least you had the hybrid, and the more information we have in the memos, the easier it is for us to know because we're not going to remember every single thing that we voted on, you know, nine months ago.
What I can do is try to centralize a list that you're requesting. I can talk to my colleagues and see how they go about that if there's other contracts. There are many type of state contracts out there, like you said, county, state, other contracts. We might not be aware. I'll be happy to network with some of my colleagues. Maybe I'll, you know, get a list that at least we'll have more of the reference.
Okay, the consensus of the board to move forward on this one this time?
Yeah, sorry.
No, it's okay. It's because... Is there a motion to authorize the purchase of a 2025 Ford Explorer Interceptor Hybrid all-wheel-drive vehicle from the New York State contract for the building department? Trustee Galen, second trustee Patino, all in favor? That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know we had to put you through a lot. You're thinking, oh, my God, they put me through this again.
All for us to have a new car.
Okay, the next... Okay, the next action item concerns an unpaid leave of absence request by employee Gina Bruno, so we've discussed this, we reviewed it, so is there a motion to approve an unpaid leave of absence for Gina Bruno Recreation Leader as outlined in the resolution? Trustee Galen, second trustee Rothrock, all in favor? That passes unanimously. Action item number five, Jeff, maybe you could just fill in the, fill in this?
Yeah, this is an annual process that we go through year-end, to just true up any budget line items that had been, excuse me, overspent prior to the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Is there a motion to approve the year-end budget transfers and budget amendments as recommended by the village treasurer? Trustee Patino, second, and trustee Galen, all in favor? That passes unanimously. Action item number six, is there a motion to approve the audit of claims as submitted and recommended by the village treasurer? Trustee Rosen Asher, second, trustee Rothrock, all in favor? That passes unanimously. I have to add a resolution to the agenda, it's going to be to schedule a public hearing for October 28th to consider amending the zoning code regarding the tree preservation provisions. So first, is there a motion to add a resolution to be number-
Seven.
Seven, to the agenda regarding scheduling a public hearing regarding the tree preservation provision? Trustee Patino, second trustee Nell, all in favor? That's added to the agenda, and now, I think we're ready to move forward finally, hopefully, with the tree preservation provisions. So is there a motion to schedule a public hearing for October 28th, 2025, to consider a local law amending the zoning code to revise the tree preservation provisions? Trustee Patino, second trustee Nell, all in favor? That passes unanimously, and it is now hereby added to next week's agenda as a public hearing, and that's it.
No, you have one more.
Which one?
You have the Maple.
That's 28th?
The, the pipeline?
It's 28th.
Oh, opposite's 28th.
It's a workshop, workshop discussion for the 28th.
Okay.
Sorry, my bad.
There's a lot of emails.
Is, let's hear the trustee liaison report. So trustee Galen, what do you have for us?
There's no timeline, there's no deadline to do that? Just double-checking. Project Maple?
I don't know.
I don't know.
While you're looking, I could have somebody else do a trustee liaison report. Trustee Rosenberg, you have a report for us?
I do not.
Okay. Trustee Rothrock, you don't have any, do you?
No, not yet.
Not yet. Trustee Rosen Asher?
I know that the Human Rights and Diversity Committee is looking to do another round of listening circles, so we'll be discussing that. If anybody wants more information on that, please reach out to them, they're incredible experiences where you really kind of get to some really difficult conversations about sensitive subjects that could really help us all work better and live together better in the village.
Okay, trustee Patino?
No reports tonight.
Okay, I, trustee Nell-
I just want, I want, in case you guys didn't see, the D-Waste stuff with sustainable Dobbs, like they recruited all these volunteers to stand at the, at the garbage cans-
Amazing.
And tell people where to put their garbage. Thank you, Stephen, everybody, for having, I was in the back of Village Hall parking lot and saw the giant containers and where you were dumping it all, and how much you guys did to, like, support them and those efforts. That was really nice of you, and I'm sure it's not the same as just picking up the garbage cans, but the, the results of that, like, it's, it's crazy, they really, they got, there was 82 pounds of trash, but 235 pounds of recycling-
Wow.
And 223 pounds of food scraps that came out of it. Instead of all of that would have just been trash if they hadn't done that, which was kind of mind-blowing to me, and I was just curious, because that means that that stuff didn't go in the incinerator, which is what we pay for, right? Do we not pay for recycling and food scraps in the same way, or is it? We pay for food scraps, but recycling we don't pay for? So it's like, that actually saves money, which is-
That's great.
And the world.
And the world, but money, like, hello? How, it's a win-win, it's just so neat, so.
The cost to truck it, and it's, pick it up, and, you know.
Well, we still have a grant to look at the food scrap, food scrap pickup at people's houses, so hopefully we'll get it.
And I have to say, I was walking in the village, like, nine o'clock the next morning, you would never have known-
Oh, flawless, I know, everyone's always, it was unbelievable.
Even nine o'clock that night, you guys cleaning up, so it's great.
It's just, you guys are like politicians, so that's all.
I just want to report, we, I attended a few things with a number of different trustees, so first I want to thank the fire department, their inspection, they beat the rain, so that was a great, great experience to actually take on a tour of the fire trucks and their, and their status, and then they had a little celebration. We were able to honor someone who had been, was it 50 years, Liz?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five years, Mr. Cullen, for 75 years of being a volunteer firefighter. So that was a great privilege and an honor to be able to bestow that upon him. We had Andrew Stewart Cousins there, Paul Finisch appeared, and county exec Ken Jenkins was there, I know that deputy mayor Nell was there, trustees Galen was there, Rothrock was there, it was just a great event, wouldn't you say so?
Yeah.
So we appreciate that. And then we also did the-
Pollinator path.
Pollinator, we went to Friends of Down, Friends of the Waterfront, they had great events, weather was a little iffy, but they had great event, I saw parts of the park that I never saw before, which is embarrassing, but I saw that, so we want to thank them for their efforts. We also stopped by the Friends of the Knoll, who had a little celebration going, they were very welcoming, and they were just celebrating their victory on the Knoll, and I feel like we did one other thing, ribbon cutting, we ribbon cut at-
Oh, Climbing Wolf, five years.
Yes, so it was a busy weekend, we did the ribbon cutting at Climbing Wolf, which was also how quickly they become an institution of the village, and people say, oh, you live in that village with Climbing Wolf, so it's a great idea, it was a great concept, and we'll thank them for how-
Thanks to the chamber for organizing that.
Thanks for the chamber for that, and I think that's what we did this weekend, right? Is there anything else that we went to?
Last weekend was-
Oh, I also want to say the vintage Wickers Creek.
Wickers Creek.
I went to that, that was great.
I was down there, too.
Yeah, that was great, that boat, I didn't get a chance to go on it, but it looked like-
It was sold out.
It was a lot of non-Dobbs Ferry people when I was at Wickers Creek.
Yeah.
It was a lot of people from outside the village.
People love antiquing, yeah, it's nice.
Yeah, that was, I think that, I think, was that our first official village, I couldn't think of another time that the village had facilitated anyone going out on the water and any, like, we had the kayaks, but, so-
Yeah.
Sailboat, that was beautiful.
I hope, I hope to many more, yeah, Kendra posted that, and I, I think within 45 minutes the rides sold out, but they were doing a lot of great sustainability education on the shore as part of Wickers Creek, which was fabulous, and do you want to, I think the November Wickers Creek is, is for public information, is not happening, right?
Oh, yes, that is true.
So no Wickers Creek in November, but more, more to come next year, and, yeah, it was an amazing weekend last weekend.
Good weekend. Is that the fourth one?
That was the third, the fourth one, they are canceling.
Oh, okay.
Because November is a little too iffy.
But they had, finally had a great day, because they usually have bad weather as well, so. Is there anything else, anyone who would like to add?
Just a reminder that you have a single Board of Trustees meeting in November on the 18th.
We still have one more in October.
You have one more in October, full agenda already, but you'll have one-
One in November?
You have one meeting in-
Shari, we have two.
You'll have, you'll have one meeting in Nov-, that's why I'm pointing it out, before your reorganization meeting on December 1st.
Okay.
Oh, I didn't realize that, okay.
Well, there, it's not on election night.
We're not having one on-
Exactly.
We usually do.
I know, we have, and-
That's why we only have one this year.
Right, early voting starts the end of October.
Okay, if there's nothing further, is there a motion to end tonight's meeting? Trustee Rothrock, second trustee Rosen Asher, all in favor? Meeting is hereby adjourned.